Ms. Randall, second by Dr. Warner.
I'm going to be quick.
Ms. Stevens, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Do we have a motion to go in the closed session?
I move that the School Board of Stafford County convene in a closed meeting for the following purposes. Pursuant to Section 2.2-3711a 19 of the Code of Virginia, to discuss school safety and security with the Stafford County Sheriff Decatur, including information subject to the exclusion in subdivision fourteen of Section 2.2-3705.2, and two, to protect its bargaining position or negotiating strategy pursuant to Virginia Code, Section 2.2-3711a 29, to discuss the terms and/or scope of a public contract for custodial purposes that involves the expenditure of public funds.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. We are now in a closed session.
... August 23rd, 2022, be certified by adopting the following resolution. Now therefore be it resolved that the School Board of Stafford County hereby certifies the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements were discussed in the closed meeting, to which this certification resolution applies, and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the board.
Second.
You call the...
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Dr. Chase, second by Dr. Warner. Cast your votes.
I thought we had to do roll call.
Don't we have to do roll call?
Oh, that's right.
For closer.
Agreed.
Ms. Guy?
Yes.
Ms. Halsted?
Yes.
Ms. Seeley?
Yes.
Ms. Randall?
Yes.
Ms. Sigmund?
Yes.
And Dr. Warner?
Agree.
The motion passes?
All right, any motions coming out of closed session? Seeing none. We'll end the special call meeting and come to the report. We're in the closed session. Come to the... The, um... We have to start the agenda over?
Yep.
Where's... Is that this one?
Yeah.
All right, well, we're called to order. Roll call, please.
Dr. Chase?
Here.
Ms. Guy?
Yes.
Ms. Halsted?
Here.
Here.
Ms. Randall?
Yeah.
Here. Yes.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda. Second.
Motion by Dr. Chase, second by Ms. Guy. Call in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. That brings us to the SCPS Convocation After Action Report. Dr. Taylor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate the opportunity to talk about this event once again with the board and to share some information with the public. I've added two items to board docs for the board and the public's review. One is a short presentation slide deck, which is really just an outline, and then a much more detailed sixteen-page report of the events and some of our corrective actions that we are planning to put in place, and many of which that we have already put in place for future events in Stafford County Public Schools. I do want to take this opportunity to, yet again, just to echo how absolutely sorry I am that this event did not go as planned. And what could and should have been a fantastic event and a unifying event for our staff and for our community ended poorly, and we have a lot of challenges that we need to face as a result of that. Some that are structural, many that are logistical, and some that are cultural. And I would like to detail some of those for the board this evening and then talk about what happened at our event, some of our findings that we were able to unpack, and of course, most importantly, how we learned from this event and where we go from here. Our convocation event was planned for August 5th. Convocations are not new to Stafford County. As a matter of fact, convocations have happened in the past. Most recently and most memorably, during Randy Bridges' term as superintendent, there was a convocation but held in two parts, because we have such a large organization and split between two parts. So it was a little bit of a unique opportunity for us all to be together in one spot and in one location. It may be difficult to see on the screens, but hopefully you can take a look online. Behind the words on this particular slide is actually a picture of Stafford County Public Schools en masse. And it was a fantastic opportunity to bring our folks together to talk about our new strategic plan, unite around a vision, and to have a professional development speaker and some fellowship. Unfortunately, our day did not go as planned even from the start with some of our logistical challenges. And when temperatures got past the point of our ability to respond, many people were experiencing health-related illnesses, and ninety-three persons were treated for health illness, and eight were transported to a hospital. We have a number of concerns, as I mentioned. Everything from our arrival to our departure, how we supported some of the health considerations, poor communication at several levels, our ability for resources such as water and food were some of the major issues that we targeted early on. So I want to break down a number of things in the report that is shared with you. And the report has a timeline of events. It has a protocol from OSHA. We did self-report as having some issues that needed to be corrected. So there is a protocol and some questions that we answered as part of that. We also detailed our findings and concerns, our next steps. We also included a financial report for you and for the public, and we also included some frequently asked questions. In this report, we also hyperlinked documents where they were available that also supported some of the things that were said and that were done. And we thought that that might be helpful for people that were interested in this, and they can find that as part of the PDF. In terms of the event itself, we definitely started the event and made some decisions at the eight o'clock hour to proceed based on weather forecasts that were lining up with what we had planned on. However, those weather forecasts changed. And in particular, our cloud cover and our temperatures got out of control very quickly in the ten o'clock hour. And we did have to call an early end to our convocation in the eleven o'clock hour, right at the end of ten o'clock at ten fifty-four. This did initiate an earlier exit than planned. We actually did not follow our early exit procedures. We followed a totally different unplanned exit, which was a little bit quicker than what we had planned, but still very slow, very cumbersome, and not well thought out in hindsight. So some of the challenges and some of the things that I want to point out as far as our findings. And I'll begin just by saying that one of our challenges on any type of event or any type of anything that we do in the school system is communication. And the event communication both before, during, and after was a challenge. In particular, consistent communication in terms of how we communicated with all staff versus school administrators, an imbalance of information given to school administrators versus all staff, outlets for staff to respond and to give feedback. Some of these areas needed direct attention. We also had significant issues at the actual event itself in terms of telecommunications. We had a limited access to radio support, and with that many cellphone users in one location at one time, critical communications were not being communicated at the times that they needed to be communicated. Not having an adequate backup plan for this was troubling during the event and troubling after the event as well, because we believe that this was definitely one of the critical failures that inhibited this event from being more successful. After the event, making sure that our staff was safe, finding mechanisms to make sure that they could get home safely, our buses to depart from the facility in a timely, orderly, and logistical manner, also a significant challenge for us. Logistics. We definitely arrived with the best of intentions to have our teachers walk down a red carpet. And our teachers certainly had that opportunity when they were coming into the stadium, but having buses depart or release their staff two at a time was not nearly significant to get our stadium filled in the time manner that we wanted to. This caused a traffic delay that was fairly significant and needed to be addressed by local law enforcement. That would be Fredericksburg City Law Enforcement. And with our Transportation Department, our Security Department, and Fredericksburg Law Enforcement, we were actually able to resolve that one. But unfortunately, the speed in resolving that created congestions in other places, in particular, person congestion inside the stadium. And it also led to folks not knowing where their bus was parked when we were departing. That definitely was an issue. Some other logistical challenges that we faced had to do with how we dismissed from this particular event. There were conflicting directives from law enforcement, from the loudspeaker, and from what was actually planned by event organizers. That confusion was definitely amplified by the number of people that we had at that particular event. That could have been handled very differently. And certainly, better coordination and having emergency plans and backup plans is definitely something that we need to do moving forward without question. Having a different approach to weather management in general seems to be a logistical challenge that we're going to need to address as any type of large activity, whether it's graduations or whether it's convocation or whether it's any type of field day or large event. This is something for us to consider, whether it's hot weather or whether it's cold weather, whether it's an indoor activity or an outdoor activity. Making sure that we have weather-appropriate supports or environmental-appropriate supports seems to be consistent. Having multiple water stations or even misters or cooling locations definitely seems to be something that we absolutely should have done. But we also have other logistical challenges that we didn't fully get the chance to amplify. This was not at the forefront of everyone's mind for understandable reasons, but we did have a fundraiser at that event for the Fredericksburg Food Bank. It raised only a portion of the funds that we intended because very few people knew where the kiosk was to make a donation. And several people wrote in to us after the event saying, "Hey, where can I make my donation? I missed the opportunity to do that." Well, that's very sweet of them to think about that as a priority, but the reality is, is we didn't leverage our public address system. We didn't leverage the video screen. We didn't leverage a number of the logistical things and tools that were at our disposal. We didn't leverage them how we could have leveraged them. And that definitely was reflective of other things that didn't go well. Planning for an adequate water supply for a large group. Thinking that you have twelve thousand bottles of water sounds like a lot of water, and it certainly was, but it wasn't enough. Purchasing water on-site was a good solution in the moment, but not a satisfactory solution in the aggregate. And even though we transported some water even back to Central Office and to the warehouse, in the moment, it was difficult to make sure that communication was getting to people to make sure that they know where access was and that we provided access in a large format. The last one is probably the most significant and hardest one to swallow and maybe even the hardest one to correct. And it has to do with the culture of Stafford County Public Schools. And though our event definitely aimed to chip away at some of the barriers that prevent our organization from being its best, meaning that we tried to create an atmosphere where we were unified as an organization, there are still challenges in Stafford County Public Schools in terms of how we communicate with one another, how we support one another, and creating a culture where people feel supported to speak up when they are not well, when they have a disagreement about something or when they want to challenge a decision that's being made. This is something that I think we all need to focus on moving forward as an organization, and in particular, me and my leadership team, as we try to move forward beyond this event and try to create a school system that is unified in support of this board's vision and mission. We have a lot of issues that we need to look at, that's for sure. And though there are a lot of things that we're proud about in our school system, there are certainly things that we need to address. Which kind of brings us to some of our next steps. And we detail this in this report in a little bit more detail. But even though we started the planning for this event early in the year, in the calendar year, having more robust pre-planning, I think, would have definitely helped solve a lot of our challenges. In particular, who you have at the table and who is a participant in that planning definitely makes a big difference. We did include emergency services, but that was a very last-minute inclusion and not one that was a part of the earliest stages of planning. And moving forward, having a lot of third-party supports, whether it be event planners or whether it be emergency services, whether it be first responders, or whether it be just other agencies that we have at our disposal, which we have many, having them be a part of walkthroughs and rehearsals critically, critically important. This board also had discussed with me bringing forward a policy and a regulation for school board consideration in terms of how we deal with large events. And we will certainly bring that to the Governance Committee because there are a lot of lessons learned that we bring forward. Evaluating the weather is always a challenge for superintendents in particular. When it snows, you're either a hero or there's lots of unfriendly things that are said about you online. It really kind of just depends. Heat events are no different, that's for sure, which kind of brings into question whether or not we can't create metrics for evaluating our environmental situation when we host an event, whether it's a graduation, a convocation, or some other large-format event. We certainly use the wet bulb reading, and there's a link to that calculator in this document when we talk about student strenuous activities. But there really isn't one for adult passive activities. So thinking about how we might come up with metrics that might help drive some of our decision-making is definitely an area that we should explore and to look at. There's simply no excuse for not having onsite working telecommunications. I take full responsibility for the failures of this event and certainly the planning and telecommunications errors is something that definitely falls on my shoulders to ensure that we have an adequate communications tree, working onsite telecommunications, and folks who have, know their roles and responsibilities and are able to communicate freely. It's a critical step as we move forward in any type of large-format planning. Our emergency plans definitely need to include something that's more than one-dimensional. The event space that we utilized for this particular event does have a number of emergency exits, and very few of them were used in this particular event in the effort to try and create order and process. But sometimes, order and process should give way to personal needs and making sure that we are accommodating for personal needs. And those things need to be discussed ahead of time. That's not something that can be done or should be done on the spur of the moment and certainly not in the thick of heightened passions and concern. And that needed to be done ahead of time, for certain. In terms of expectations and guidance, this definitely comes back to clear communications with our staff and how we support our staff and being crystal clear with what our expectations are and also how we support our family members. Team Stafford very much is a family. We saw that, although not necessarily the way we wanted to see it on August 5th. But we definitely saw how Team Stafford bound together as a family. And when you see family members who are struggling or in distress, that is something you never want to see, your friends and colleagues in that state. And it's traumatic. And to that end, we need to be clear about what we are allowing, what we're not allowing, why, and how we got to the decisions that we got to and be better stewards of that information for our folks. And to that end, I think that this is an important, small, but first step in terms of how we work together and how we grow together and how we learn together is full acknowledgement that this did not go well. And hearing people in terms of how they struggled with this event and how they struggle with this ongoing and addressing some of the trauma that may be associated with this event is critically important. We definitely set out with the objective of trying to create a fun atmosphere that would help unify our county. And we've definitely unified our staff and our county, but not in the way that we intended by any stretch. We definitely have a fantastic and supportive group in Stafford County. Team Stafford is a great place to live, work, and learn and to be a part of. And Stafford County is a great place. This event certainly didn't diminish that. But it definitely set us on a path of how we might do things better moving forward. So with that, I submit this report for the board as information and will certainly entertain any questions that the board may have, although we've all talked about this substantially, both in meetings and outside of meetings, and offered this report to the public as well. And certainly will entertain any questions that the public may have. And I'm a pretty easy person to find and talk to and certainly offer that as well. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Taylor. Any questions on the board? Ms. Halsted?
I just have a couple for clarification points. And bearing in mind that, you know, again, this was my life for almost twenty years. So first, it's beyond nice to see that we have a leader who stepped up immediately without batting an eye to accept responsibility for this. I did a lot of this stuff and fought for months to get someone to accept a small amount of responsibility for even the smallest things going wrong. So thank you for doing that. Did you, we talked about backup plans. I can tell you can have eighteen backup plans, and the thing that you didn't plan for is going to be the one thing that goes wrong. Onsite communications, I know our communication walkies were somewhere else. They weren't there. Were we offered communication devices by the Nat Stadium folks once everything happened?
Yes. So we do have access to walkies. We use them in our work on a regular basis. They do require maintenance, and they do require to be reprogrammed on occasion. The access that we had to the ones that we usually use were being maintained and were being reprogrammed by law enforcement at that time. So we were reliant on the telecommunications that were available to Nat Stadium, which was not nearly the amount of walkies that we would normally have for an event. We had access to four, which is a lot less than what we would normally have, which would be dozens.
Okay. So the next question I have is, did you spend any time identifying what you did right? So you don't have to, you know, like, we spent a lot of time identifying what we did wrong, and then we focus on fixing that, and we forget to identify what we did right so that we don't, you know, waste time. Well, we don't forget, but we also don't waste time trying to fix stuff that was right.
That might be a different conversation for another day. I will say that we spent our time addressing the issues that were in front of us. I know that there were some things that were positive that we did right. We might have to go back and think about that at a later date.
Okay. I'm going to say two things, just because I did spend a long time in this field. You know, responsibility is spread across the spectrum of everyone that was involved in here. That includes you, that includes Fred Nat Stadium, that includes the people who attended, who both had a great time and who didn't have a great time. That includes our external partners, who could have also provided support in more positive and affirmative ways that wasn't provided. So that's really something that we should all take from that, is when we have an event like this, I personally, from the number of emails I received, that there was positive feedback on the intent. You know, we can always focus on the negative, which some folks choose to do. We can always tell each other that apologies aren't enough because of whatever, we're feeling very emotional at the time. But forgiveness is huge, number one. And number two, there were a lot of folks that really appreciated the time, effort, and energy. And I implore us all to remember, as adults, we have a certain level of personal accountability. And that's not for you, that's for everyone. I mean, it's for myself as well, but it's hot in Virginia in August, we all know that. And I don't want to see, hold on, I don't want to see us not focus on what happened, but I want us to remember too, maybe we need to look at a more robust messaging service to help folks remember, to prepare more adequately. And I don't know how many messages went out to our staff beforehand, reminding them to dress appropriately or bring their own water or whatever. So those are certainly other things we should put in, in terms of communicating with our staff. Personal accountability isn't, I'm not a checklist person, so it does help me if I have a memo that says, "Don't forget, this is your checklist." So also taking a look at those things. And finally, I just want to say that I really feel like we're maybe a kind of oriented society. We have a fifteen-minute news cycle that can blow everything up pretty quickly. That's what happened with me because I wasn't there. And I got a rather inflammatory, you know, newspaper article that came to me before I even knew anything else that was happening at that time. So for anybody who wants to listen to the after-action report and really think about it, it's important to also remember to look back at what you did or didn't do in those timeframes so that moving forward, you can also do, you can also be, well, react a little different the next time it happens. I'm sorry. Oh. Who is it? Just kidding. But anyway, so no one, look, I mean, at the end of the day, I don't want, I don't think this was, this whole thing wasn't bad. It didn't go bad, but it didn't go good, but it didn't go bad. It just went. And I don't want us to walk away from something like this, carrying scars and scabs that we need to pick at all the way through the end of the time. I think there have been a lot of lessons learned here. And I, but I think everyone has to learn those lessons, not just this school system. That's all I'm saying.
Thank you. I'm just going to go down the line. Ms. Guy?
I was trying to figure out her microphone thing. This isn't my wheelhouse, so I'm not going to say, I am a mom. And I'm a mom. And so, you know, maybe more momming with the planning. But I do love how you, you know, I love how you lead and how you accept criticism or critique, and you take it all on the chin. I would just say, yo, it's August. I think this was a fantastic event, up until it wasn't. And I loved the message, I loved everything about it up until it was really hot. So I think all that could still happen in the beginning of October, on a Saturday. And that's it, that's all I'm going to say.
Ms. Randall?
I made all my comments that I need to make at the last meeting. You know, this is what we wanted from you. I think you, again, I appreciate the fact that you took the responsibility. I appreciate the amount of time and effort you'd taken to cover the things that we discussed and putting together this report, and I just appreciate that. And I'm grateful that our staff members that were in harm's way that day are feeling much better now. And I'm grateful for the people that helped them, and I was happy to be helpful to that cause as well.
Thank you. Ms. Sigmund?
I don't have a lot to say either. I do appreciate that we had this evening and putting this information out there. I do want to encourage anyone who has any additional questions or concerns. Like, this does not mean we, I mean, having this meeting is not the end of a conversation. I'm hoping it's an opportunity to put some information out and potentially get further questions, you know, answered and concerns addressed. So please continue to reach out to any and all of us with anything further. I was glad to have attended, I wished it would have gone as planned. I love those type of things. And, you know, thanks again.
Dr. Warner?
Thank you for the thorough report, and I appreciate that it's public, and I think the public will be interested in seeing this. I think that it's... I think that it's, you can never plan for the unexpected. So it's the fact that you, you know, you took responsibility, you evaluated the situation, and we go forward, and that's the way life works.
Dr. Chase?
Yes, so I haven't heard. Is everybody okay? Okay, so I just want to make sure that that was the case. And then...
Dr. Chase, if I might, the folks that we have heard from have affirmed that they're doing better. There certainly are some folks that, you know, still have concerns and still have certainly feelings about the event, as well as maybe some lingering medical concerns, but folks are feeling better.
Okay, good to know. And I want to apologize to staff. I mean, I'm really sorry for everybody who, you know, had heat-related injuries and all of that. I mean, we, as a board, this is not something that we want. And then, third, I tried to access some of the links in the PDF up here, and I'm not able to. So staff needs to correct that so that if somebody's looking at the PDF and they want to read something, that they're able to actually get that. So if staff could please correct that, that would be great. Thank you.
Okay, and I want to thank you for this very thorough after-action report, which I'm planning on studying. And I don't think that we will experience these issues again. I think someone mentioned, Ms. Halsted, you can't plan for, you know, the unplanned, or several people mentioned that. But I anticipate that the next time, there will be an abundance of overplanning, which is never a bad thing. So thank you.
Thank you. I'll bring you brand-new mistakes next time.
Well, lessons learned, you know, that's how we move forward. All right, we have eight minutes. Dr. Warner, how long do you think we're going to need for our self-evaluation? More than eight minutes?
Ms. Randall and I talked, yeah, more than eight minutes.
How many, how many minutes? I'm debating just setting our meeting to start. We put this off so many times, I'd really like to get to it. Okay, well, is there any objection to starting our meeting at seven then? That will give us time to go through either that, or we can start our meeting at 6:30 and then come after the meeting, come back. Oh, that's it?
Yeah, that was it.
Okay, all right. I thought we had, I thought we had more. All right, we've already had two meetings before, two, three?
Yeah, we're at evaluation.
Okay, is it still Tuesday? Okay, all right, that sounds good. All right, well, then let's move. Now, some of us took a break before this, some of us didn't. So I'm going to say we'll start at 6:30. We're going to do this in the executive conference room. We'll start at 6:30, start the discussion.
Is there anyone here, though, that wants to go to, they can go in the back? All right, so they'll go in the back.
All right, we're starting now. Okay, can I just interject and first start and say, if everybody has not, if they could, please send to Tricia any evaluations that you have on this, so we can get that finalized. And center, if you did that, that's great. If you haven't, if you could do it by Friday.
And you got him, you said again, because I'm from...
Friday, Friday, this Friday.
Yes, they're evaluating us as well.
She should.
She should.
You know, we'll take care of you, take care of us.
We need to reevaluate you, and then you could evaluate us because of that.
Okay, the only, the purpose, the only purpose of this session is just to do our self-evaluation. So I'd like to go ahead and get started. So at the retreat, we were, we assigned ourselves several tasks, to create and implement a governance plan, code of conduct and governance handbook, to review and amend the 1,100-level policies, to consider and establish advisory committees. And we did all those things. We got them all done. And I think we were very cooperative, and we worked really well together. We've added new advisory committees. We've moved the EDOC committee to a school board committee. We've added a budget committee. We didn't add anything else. I think those are the only ones. And we continued transportation. So, and I think that our committees are a real strength that we have. And I look forward to not having all those reports at the same time.
Well, and I think that what's been very nice, and like Ms. Healy said, we're going to come back to it.
I just want to look at the term.
But it's really nice to get these advisory reports and have them filtered through the superintendents as to the suggestions, how applicable can we make them to either policy, or to budget, or to practice. So I would just very much want to say, please keep these committees going because I really appreciate and value their information input that they give. And I love working on them, too.
Absolutely. So the one thing, there were several themes that have come up in our conversations. And when I talked to Ms. Randall today about this evaluation, there were three things that kind of linked to our strategic plan that seemed to be overarching goals. So we should have the division goals, and we should have our goals as school board. And there are ways that we can coordinate those. One of the things was literacy, safety in school security, and then the other one was community engagement.
So you're linking this to this, am I supposed to be following this?
It's sort of, it's, this is general. Because, yeah, because these seem to be, these seem to be themes, though, that we... Literacy, school safety, and security.
Because for me, it would be numeracy.
See, and I feel like literacy above that, only because you have to be able to read the word problems. That's my thing.
I mean, I think...
You can't qualify, you can't...
I think literacy and numeracy are both equally valid.
Yeah, but we never talk about numeracy, and we always talk about literacy. And so numeracy just gets put back in the system.
Can you define numeracy, those of us not in the field?
Yeah. So it has to do with a sense of numbers, and a sense of quantities, and estimation, and all that kind of thing. A sense of time. You know, people who have problems with numeracy often can't figure out what time of day they're supposed to be one place or another place.
That's what's wrong with my daughter and I. So that's a good point, too, though, I mean, because those are estimation, all that stuff. Those skills are really important. Really important. And that's funny, I don't think they are. I think it is because we don't use the word.
Right, I mean, I've been hearing about literacy since I was 10, right?
Right.
Johnny couldn't read, and it's been the top thing for, gosh, for 50 years or something like that. And it's very rare for us to get the other.
What?
Do I have some?
Yeah.
Your shirt has a mask. It was bothering Susan. Okay, so we can add numeracy. I think literacy and numeracy, I think those are overarching goals in our strategic plan anyway. But what I was like, there was three, right?
Yes.
There was three.
The third?
Community engagement.
Community engagement. So those three main goals are what we would like to talk about setting for next year for our house.
Does anyone, how does anyone feel about this?
Yes, right.
Or add to, change.
Are we setting goals for the board, or for the school system?
Well, these are for the board, but we're going to, what we're going to do is, we're trying to keep...
That's where the literacy and numeracy, for the board, I mean, I'm...
But there are things that we can do, like, we can, but...
I like that's what she's going to say.
She's premonitioned. So what we talked about is the idea that when we do our community engagement, our school engagement, it would be nice if we go to not just our schools, our own schools, but to other schools. And there are things that we could do. For example, for numeracy, we could encourage or participate in school Mathelons, where they do different math activities, math Olympiads. We could do reading. We could go back to, when I first started, we used to do a book reading at North Star and stuff. There was a corporate sponsors would get us books that we would do. I mean, we could do things like that in second grade. Say, every second grade class gets a book, and then the school board participates in reading to a class. You know, we can use the school ambassadors and those kinds of things. So what we're trying to do is set goals that we can then link back to our strategic goals, but then we can focus when we're doing our own community outreach. So one of the things Maya and I had spoken about this, just when we met up a couple weeks ago, or before that, I think, actually. Yeah, I would like to see us establish an ambassador program sort of to our schools that like the central office has there, where we spend a day in the school, either be in the sub for a class, I don't know what the rules are on that, so you can tell me. But I...
There are rules.
Well, I guess, I know there are rules, but I think it would be good for, look, we're setting policies for their schools. We're going based on what we see or what we hear, right? And what we read on our emails, stuff like that. So it might be nice for us to spend a day in the school, not just being toured by a principal during a, sometimes a dog and pony show, right? Like, it's like, look how great my school is. I know it is, but I'd love to see, and not just visit a class, but maybe teach a class and see what my teachers experience, and trying to get kids' attention, trying to keep it, trying to understand.
Maybe, oh, right, we're showing the teacher. Maybe, maybe visit, spend a few hours in a classroom.
Anyway, instead of just running in and watching, you know, like, a two-minute thing for it, but really to offer the support to the staff out there, to show them that we are. And I mean, it wouldn't be every day. It'd be like, you know, once a quarter, or once a year.
Well, so for example, when I first got on the board, there was a teacher who unfortunately is no longer here. And she had a program where school board members were invited to be pen pals to students in her class. And then, and then we were invited in to talk to the class and tell them about what we did, and read a book, and all of that. But that was one teacher who's doing that program, and she's not here anymore. So, you know, those kinds of things, we could certainly engage in. But it needs to be, like, we, I don't want to disrupt classes.
No, 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 and I would leave it up to Thomas to really kind of identify how that would work, and ways that we can provide help in the process, you know what I mean? Like, there's no reason why...
So one of the things that, like, it comes up is, you know, are we overstepping our line, or are we in line? So one of the things in reading through the information that we were sent was as a board, making instructional and academic goals that we want for our district. And how can it be measured? And one of the things that even Liza and I were talking to, when we were talking about these instructional goals, is that, you know, even Ms. Tauri will come up, and she'll give us all of these acronyms for different tests. And maybe some of us understand them, and maybe some of us don't. Even worse, our parents don't understand them. And our parents, I mean, you're given a number, and my kid looks like they're in the green zone, so I guess that's okay. Doesn't, you don't understand it all. So even having, you know, we would like to see increased progress and attention to literacy and numeracy, if we want to say both. And then have, you know, get updates to say, hey, they're doing, you know, a STEM night at this elementary school, and, you know, you can go and see some of the highlights of the math. But also having opportunities for us, and maybe we come to a place where someone teaches us about how these math test scores really, what they're really for, what they really tell, who cares really about them, well, tell me why. And in the same time, we can be educating.
I can't, I'm sorry, it was the echo, it was driving me crazy. I can hear her. I'll just move my seat. Yeah, I'm moving my seat because I can't.
I guess my...
Technically, we have to have an open goal.
Right. I guess my question about that is, when I had kids in the schools, I would have teacher conferences, and I would go have a conference with the teacher. And then the teacher would show me the test score, and would explain to me how to read it, and what it meant, and all of that. And so, I mean, I don't know whether...
I think in middle school and high school, though, that can tend to get washed away. You know, the least the parents are in tends to be the thing that happens. I mean, I on purpose go in at three to four weeks when my kids were in there because I'm like, let me talk, talk to me before my kid's in trouble, and, you know, or I can help, and I think you know my kid, kind of thing. But I just think overall and in general, it might not all be there for the parents. And maybe having a session that's teaching us is available to the public.
Right. For me, the thing I have concerns about is that when data has been presented to us, it's been presented without any comparison. So I have no baseline to know whether that number means anything. It's just if you tell me...
And yes, according.
Right, if you tell me it's 63% pass rate, but I don't know what the state's pass rate is, and I don't know what the country's pass rate, it's just 63%. Doesn't tell me if that's good or bad. And so for me, as a board member, I would like to receive data that I can actually make sense of.
So I completely agree. I have a very, you know, data for me is, I mean, the variables that go into assessing the data are generally written somewhere, like, hey, we only considered this, 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 and this when we were looking at this. But when you're, when you're talking about test scores and stuff like that, like, how really is Stafford, kind of using a little bit of that in the beginning when we were talking about the pandemics of, Thomas, but at the end of the day, like, each year, it's difficult to say, like, hey, did we increase from this or that level? Because I don't, how do we know then?
And we switch tests.
Well, we're right. And we allow kids to opt out of that test, so how do we really know? So I'm a big fan of more data analytics, more ways to look in and really make the numbers mean something.
Well, maybe not more, just clearer, right?
And maybe some background, more background so we understand it. But also, like, utilizing, and I think the town halls are a great format, because then parents from all over the county can participate in things that they're interested. So if we have a board development that talks, that teaches us more about the data and what we're looking for, and how to evaluate, parents can also participate. So more of a countywide thing, which is kind of what, you know, you've talked about doing. And I think those that serve a board purpose are wonderful. I think they really are. Are you talking about tying that into the objectives here? Which, I'm only going to this because I see the last one says develop two or three objectives. Are you talking about tying those in? Yes, we're tying those to those objectives. And then using, like, we all have different strengths and weaknesses. We all have, I think, I think that we, and relationships, and I think that we have to work on things like communication, and working as a team for a division, not for individual districts. Because individual magisterial districts so much. Because the school succeeds when we all succeed, the division. Agreed, but we're also here to represent our districts and advise them with the boards because we're such a large system.
But the business that some districts, some districts...
Well, I agree, but...
I mean, so, so I have, what, eight or nine schools in my district?
I have one.
And you have one or two.
Well, I mean, I...
You know, Rocky Run and Hartwood, that's, that are ten.
Yeah, but four, three.
Right.
That's for the low.
Rodney Thompson and Gilville.
You don't have Rodney.
Not, that's not physically in your district.
Oh, that's in your, I agree, yeah, 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 yeah.
So, so to me, I can't think that way. I have to think about, you know, I can't, I, I'm stretched at the moment. At the three district, you may, that'll be different. But at the moment, I am the district with the most schools residing in that district.
Right.
And so...
And like, my kids, I don't have a high school, so my kids go to North, and they go to, you know, Brookport. So, so we don't, our kids, even though we represent our constituents, our kids don't go to just the schools in our district. So that's why I see a more...
I mean, you can't, so you can't be a voice to Rocky Run and Hartwood. You have to be the voice for...
Right, right. No, I totally agree with that. And that's, that's not an issue for me. I'm sad. I mean, I'm a Stafford County school board member, not a Hartwood school board member. But, but at the end of the day, it also helps for each district itself to feel that they have one person who's going to hear them. And that's why they, so, so I don't want to blur that line either. But I think that in terms of, like, creating objectives for these things, I mean, there's definitely ways that, for crossover and stuff like that. But I still have a lot of ground to gain in getting to your guys' school. And I don't want to go without you for the first time, or whatever, because that's your school, unless you tell me to go without you for the first time. But, but...
I would say if you want to go to any of the schools that are in my district, just shoot me an invitation. If I can come to, I will. But if I can't, you are absolutely fine to go.
All right, cool. Thank you.
Same, I think the same thing to anybody.
Okay, cool.
As long as it's okay with the principal.
Right, 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 right. Well, I'll just copy you on the initial...
The other part that I think, though, when we talk about community engagement is, you know, in trying to, thinking in terms of goals, is even thinking in terms of, you know, and I don't say these as like checkpoints, like, you know, shame on you for not doing that. That is not what this is. These are, these are objectives for us to kind of steer our way to. Like I said, when he first came into the county, I don't know where we're going. But, you know, I feel like if we want to say, you know, for community engagement, oh, you know, let's put on the board to attend four school tours and one not in your district. You know, maybe you can do that, maybe you can't. Maybe it's super easy for you, maybe it isn't. You know, attending two events a year, and, you know, two, and one in your district and one not. And maybe it's a soccer game, maybe it's a choral concert, maybe it's, you know, a field day, or, you know...
The art shows, the block parties, there's all sorts of events that happen at different schools. That, that...
That, 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 you know, soccer games, lacrosse games, football games, there's all sorts of things.
Yeah. Yeah, and then I'm just saying.
You wanna go to a kid thing? You know, my kids are.
Are you gonna ask us to drive?
We've got two in soccer, I've got everybody on a bell schedule, yeah, whatever you wanna do.
Yeah. But I'm just saying, like, even touching on places, you know, in your district, out of your district, just like you say, could to kind of tying the constituency and, you know, really know what you're talking about when, you know, you're sitting there going, my schools, and it's like, yeah, your schools aren't an island compared to what my kids are go, you know what I mean, like, I found, when I worked on C I P, I was, I sat at the table, and I'm going, well, our schools are, and there's a, uh, 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 not up in the north, uh, 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 not in the west, and I'm going, oh, really? And it was so interesting to me to meet with people more southeast and west, one county, way different system, for depending on where you are. So I just kind of think it opens our eyes, constituents see us in a light friendly way, we're not running something, we're not, you know, showing something, we're not, like you say, dog and pony showing, it's just go. And so, you know, I think things like that, you know, maybe that we ourselves organize, we've done it in two years for one event, but maybe we can stretch ourselves to two, where at Thanksgiving, we can go to Rising Star and serve meals, and I know, when I offered us to help, she, we were able to extend to seventy-five more families, or seventy-five more meals, sorry, seventy-five more meals that we were at because we offered delivery, because it was only a certain number that could come, and then we actually drove around in neighborhoods, I divided up staff and board members, and we delivered meals to homes that couldn't otherwise come. So, um, you know, just.
You know, Susan, can I say also, um, I I got this insight because I got a ride home from a board member, and their comment was like, oh, I didn't understand the logistics of Acquah Harbor, like I do now from driving it.
Yeah.
And I will say that as a really huge advocate, when it came to the districting, you guys didn't get what we were saying a lot, we could tell, I knew it, I knew it, cause you ain't been there.
Yeah.
And, okay, well, this really is special, I know, but I don't, I don't, I don't think the, I don't think the message was like really resonating, and it's because you just weren't there.
I'm there thirty-seven years. Until the end of the water harbor. Yeah.
There is no.
Yeah, there is no, my house is there.
Well, the third section right at the dump.
So. Beginning and have to start over.
Oh, excuse me, did you just say the third section was the dump?
It was, it was the dump, when I, when I lived in Acquah Harbor, I was the sixty-third family to move in, and the third section was the dump.
Okay, decorum, please, that's not, that's not something I, but, so what I'm saying is, I think we we do ourselves an injustice to our, to our constituents, when I say that, I mean the entire county, when we, when we actually live and rule and govern on an island, you know?
Yeah.
Like when, when Alyssa mentioned something about, um, oh, you know, the students at this one particular school, there's snakes there, I said, what? You got my kids in schools with with snakes? My kids are Hartwood kids, yes, they are.
Yes.
You know what I'm saying, and we still need to talk about how we're gonna cover that out, but, like, we should, we can feel that way about all the students, you know, but
Yeah. Yeah.
As the elected official, the nuanced issues for that community, I think we're the best advocate for that, right?
Right.
But we still need to engage and go out so that we can understand and see, and I'm, I still haven't.
I I don't hear anybody saying they don't think we should go to other schools outside our district, so the question is, how many times do you wanna do it, set as a goal?
Yeah.
You should set a minimum, and then see how we do, go from there.
So let's say four school visits, a combination of in and out of your district, two community events.
Yes.
Great.
And then, um.
Why don't, why don't we set the goal for outside of your district, assuming that everybody's gonna go in their district? I mean, do we really?
I think you should say both ways.
I, well, I just think four visits, I, I.
What do you? Four is nothing, I mean, I've got, I've got seven schools.
Or say six. We can say any, whenever you want.
I I think what we're trying to do is establish a minimum.
You're talking about of course, the year.
Establish a minimum.
A minimum so that everybody has, so everybody's showing something, everybody's gonna probably do more. Um, I think that.
Let's set a reasonable goal, though, I mean, who set the bar low, set the bar reasonable.
Yeah, but, but I think there's a certain amount of assumption that you're gonna visit your own schools or whatever, I think it's just a matter of making sure that on paper.
Well, that's what I see.
Right, so if you say your own schools, then Susan only has to make one visit, and, like, she done, right?
Well, I can say all the schools to the kids, but my kids go to, you can say all the schools to the kids in your district go to.
Yeah.
Well, I'd I'd say new members, what is your goal for hitting every school?
Yeah.
Like, I mean, I have hit every single school.
Yeah, I see.
But, so what, I mean, COVID kinda made that a little challenging for for some folks, but what, what's a reasonable goal for a board member to have gone to
Probably your career term.
All thirty-one, thirty-two schools.
I mean, heck, I don't care, like, if you're gonna ask me to do it in one year, though, that might be harder, but, but also, I might also rather, if we're gonna do the
That's what you did.
invitation thing, and I'm like, you know, I wasn't thinking about going to that school, but, you know, if you know you're going to one of your schools and just shoot me an email and say, Alyssa, I'm gonna hit this school,
Yeah.
just if you have time, come with me, or whatever, then that helps me knock a few out more than me, you know, trying to figure out how to bring everything in, cause I, and plus,
Sure.
First, okay.
it minimizes the number of days we impact or interrupt that school.
Can, can we make this effective immediately, cause Martin and I both go into a school on Thursday?
Well, I think, our, our goal is to try to to set a minimum so that people are thinking about it, and I, I don't think it's,
I would do that, yeah.
I I don't think anybody's gonna get, uh, beaten over the head if they don't meet four and two, but I also think everybody's gonna do more than that.
No, no, I think, I think it's for yourself, it's not, you don't have to self-report and say, hey, I I only, sorry, I am looking.
Yeah.
But, but, but what about.
But those school attendance officers will have to check us in too.
It's for yourself. It's, it's for yourself, that's it.
That's right.
But what about, you know, within two years, you try to hit every school, you know?
Yes.
I think that's.
I think we should keep it to the one-year mark, though, otherwise you're gonna, if I think, if, if somebody has a job outside, but I, I just say you do, if,
I don't think, I think it's unreasonable.
I, I, it's hard, it is so hard, yeah.
Stafford.
No, 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 I don't say you do every school in a year, I just say, let's make the goal for one year so that we can reassess and see where we wanna grow, you know?
I don't think. Um, okay. And and then all board, all board members should at some point hit all schools, visit all schools.
So.
During their tenure, but you can even say during tenure.
Yeah, 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 I actually think it's important to say that with the intention, just something, simple language that with the intention that all school board members, I would even say expect it to sort of hit every school, cause that is important, um, and maybe we can do it, like, in a year, I don't know.
I think the year is unreasonable, and some of the schools are really far away, and you're gonna have to plan a couple hours.
Yeah. But I'm saying, like, within their tenure, within their tenure.
But I mean, if there's a, like, if there's a redistricting, it's really good to go to every school, that would be effective by that redistricting, right, so if you've already done it, and it already helps.
Oh, yeah.
Right.
Yes.
And the community.
Yes, okay, um, the other thing we talked about is like, the value.
Yeah. So what are you gonna say, four? I mean, I.
I was, within their tenure, within their tenure.
Oh, every, yeah, but what are we saying for the one year? Cause we have.
Four and two, four and two, yeah, and then, that, the, we have, overarching goal is that all board members should visit every school at some point during their tenure.
Four and two, okay. Four schools, two events?
So I think that's reasonable, um.
Okay.
Okay, so you get twenty-three years of that.
Um, seventy. She's like, I'm done.
It's not retro, it's going forward.
During your.
I'm going forward.
It's going forward, nice surprise.
Nice surprise.
I'm telling you, you can't change them, really.
And, and, and we should be, we should have a forum this summer from her.
Okay. Yes.
I like.
So.
Yeah, and and I, you know, I would like to see us do things like, what was the, call the book thing?
I'm always really big, man.
We used to have corporate meetings. The one book?
One book.
One book.
Yes. And that other thing ties into literacy too.
No, and we can get a book with math in it.
Well, but I, I, I went to, I've got three books when I went to visit principals, right, so I've done, I've been reading the books, so, yeah,
I'll teach it.
So you're.
Yeah.
Yes.
If you go visit the school at the right time of the summer, you're likely to get handed one of the books.
Well, I even like to get a corporate sponsor to say, let's say, all second graders get the same book in all of our schools, and then we read them to them. You know, cause, and the reason I say second grade is because if they're not reading on grade level by third grade, they're, they're screwed, so, so.
Yeah. Yep. I mean, good for him.
Right, me.
Not screwed, it's a challenge.
It's a challenge to bring them up to grade level.
Opportunity for growth.
It's an opportunity, but, I mean, I would like to see us do some, that's another possible activity that we could do.
I think, yeah.
Yeah, I like it, I like that.
So.
School board book club.
School board book club, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Not as expensive as you think.
And if we could get a corporate sponsor, that would be nice, and I mean, there's a lot of businesses in Charlotte.
And honestly, when we did the Thanksgiving meal thing at Rising Star, Ms. Massey um, asked us for a Thanksgiving book, and she picked one out, and I think it was part of like even one of the book fairs or something like that, and we were able to stick a book in every one of the meals that we handed out.
It's, you know, and next year, we could do like kindergartners, and introduce, uh, you know, welcome to school, and one book for kindergartners, you know, we could change it up every year.
But you know what, for doing detective, that for the freshmen, when my son was going there, they were given a book that they had, all freshmen.
You know, I'd like to do something for the new teachers.
Yeah.
Oh, and then, you know, okay.
For me, I think that would be.
I think, I think participating in any of the children's to do, was a really good thing for us.
And I just wanna tell you that Dan Reiter and, um, and Melinda Cumming, who pitches furniture, I just, oh my god, I was so.
Well, something, if you could do something, you want to do.
It depends on how much she has.
I'd like to, I, and let you some. Let that, let's, let's, let that be our second event that we do, the first one, if we do, the Thanksgiving meal, type of date.
What, what a day for now.
And they, they just did it with such grace, it was just really.
Yeah, yeah, it's gonna start the dance.
The treble stuff.
The treble stuff, yeah.
My daughter's girl was there for new teachers, and.
A dinner?
Yeah.
Yeah, where was that?
It was at, uh, U M W, and it was an opportunity, we actually taught, sit at a table, we did teachers and taught with.
Okay.
And they, they had. Center, centerpieces, and then, some, one of the teachers got, like, school supplies and.
Right.
Well, I think the brewery idea was the best darn thing we've ever done.
Oh, my god.
I'm.
Good. I'm, I'm still trying to get the root race to the bottom, that one is depressing, it takes me, it takes me a while, it's taking me a while to read that book. Cause I have to put it down every now and again.
Get some head.
Yeah, it does.
This is an aside, but Dr. Taylor and I were in a classroom up at Garrisonville, and it was a kindergarten from Park Ridge who got redistricted, meeting with the focus teacher, and she was telling us, and she was of the first grade, how she's been reading chapter books since she was in kindergarten. Oh, she would've finished all those books.
She's a very precocious young lady.
Um, alright.
And she felt, so that was cool.
So I wanna go back to, um, the, so we did from, um, community engagement, right, just to make sure I'm on track with this, and I know Liza said she was only giving us thirty minutes, and we're at thirty-one, I'm just kidding. Um, professional development and the commitment to class, like, taking classes, like, what are, like, I just, I'm a hundred percent sure, take, like, I've read things?
So, so I'll tell you, sure, my, I mean, I watch what's happening to the south of us, and I see people who have not gotten trained, they should have gotten.
Okay, so, yeah, so you're talking like.
Mm-hmm, that's true.
Mm-hmm, just talking on, general.
So.
Well, you know what I'm saying, like, so you, you're talking like really like Robert's rules and all that stuff, and getting like that general, continuing to enhance.
What are you, that and just some of what you're allowed to do and not allowed to do?
Well, at least, at least a bunch of special lessons, like, you can't do that.
You should know what your job in jail.
Right, right.
It's like asking that.
You have to have a superintendent by law, I don't think everyone knew that, I don't think that, but you should know that when you're sitting on the board,
Right.
and when you have the ability to hire fire, you should know what you have to have in your arsenal in order for your school system not to collapse. We, I mean, everyone, you've, you've, you've never, you're never perfect, everyone has to have continual education. I think I'm the best mom I've ever met, aside from my mother, I still read those stupid articles. My mother, my mother, I still read articles about being a good parent and child development, even though I'm like, crap, I did it wrong, you know, but I do that type of stuff, cause it's important.
No, I agree, I just wanna make sure, like, we're, I'm, I'm, I'm like, I'm happy to read teacher literature too, but I'm not sure, like.
Well, I mean, for me, it's sort of like, I might go to a training that has to do with, let me see, what's a recent training?
Well, I did a recent cybersecurity one, for an example, because to me, cybersecurity, it's not a question of if we get hit, it's when.
Yeah. Alright.
Because what they're doing is they're probing vulnerable networks, and they're going to ask for ransom, and there's a lot of small districts that have, all over the state that have been hit. So, so I went to the cybersecurity training, and I learned quite a bit about, you know, and then I came back and we talked about, um, do we do phishing exercises with our schools? Because one of our high school students, one of them was phished, and, and, they, they got access.
One of the teachers that gets in.
And then I went to, I went to the conference, education conference of the B S B A, and, and they had a thing on,
Yeah, yeah.
um, you know, intelligent design of schools, and I was sort of like, oh, well, let me accessibility, and, and so that was, so it's just, we aren't all gonna go to all, all the same professional development and training, but if we all are going to some, we cover more area, right, and then we can bring back those.
Right, right.
And so that when topics come up, you can say, hey, you know, I took a class and I learned this, I mean, that's all the thing, like I said, with me, with Spotsy, and
Yeah. Right.
and the, you know, knowing that our high schools weren't getting interventions and extensions, what could we do? Uh, you know, that we weren't having activity buses, so now kids who wanted to do clubs couldn't be involved, and, you know, or get tutoring, or things like that was a problem. So now, with this new lunch thing that I learned about, the S B A, listening to Spotsy do their presentation, I was able to talk, do we have the same model? No. Do we do it our way? Sure.
Right. Right.
So, I think just being able to either, you know, and, and this kind of brings me up to just, it just popped in my head because you said something. As, um, one of the things that we have an advantage of at the S B A to do, is they put you aside in rooms based, based on your regions, and so you get to talk about whatever hot topic is in your region, and it's not even like, you sit in the audience and someone's just talking, it's literally, I'm gonna get up and move around the room, talk with whoever your districts are, whatever conversation you wanna bring up, and what if, for something, I don't know if you're even interested, uh, is having, like, hosting even, a region, or three, just school board, social, where the school boards come and we get to do it ourselves.
Spotsy used to do it.
What's that?
Spotsy used to do it.
Oh. So maybe, I'm just saying, you know, that that's a way to.
Yeah, that we're doing the legislative thing.
Yeah, but to move around the room and, and talk about our legislative things, so that we can pile on maybe and help each other.
Yes.
Or student discipline, what do you do for security, cybersecurity, how do you promote, you know, whatever you want to promote?
Well, you have the, um, internships and the, uh, school, school-based, uh, work, work-based learning. There's a great program, I can't remember the name of the school district, it begins with D, um, a great program, they do a great program, they do these rodeos where they come in and they, they show all the skills they've learned in their C T E training for employers, and most of them have job offers by the end of the day. I mean, they do all these really interesting activities.
Yeah.
So a lot of times, it's just interacting with other school boards to see, how do you guys do this? How do you guys handle workplace learning?
Right.
How do you afford it?
Who do, do you get any corporate sponsors? How do you pay for this? And, and, and a lot of times, you can pick up information that's really, really useful.
That way. But COVID kind of.
A day.
Yes.
It's real, like, it.
You're.
We didn't get that as an advantage.
Right, yeah, I think that's something that hopefully will ramp back up now that.
Yeah.
But maybe we could be the, the ones who step out on that, like, you know, invite who we want to come and do a talking.
I think we're in a, in a.
Yeah.
They used to go to, yeah.
Yeah.
Region used to go to.
Okay, but maybe we can be the one to kick that up and say, you know, what, what topics do we want?
You know, let's do a lecture, what topics?
Okay, let's just appoint two people to, can be our social directors, and then can come up.
Social impact.
I would like to do it.
So.
I am too.
Okay, bye, so, so, so pick two topics, two topics for, um, uh, an in-depth somebody to present to us.
You too.
I do it.
Alright, me and Maya, we'll work on. Sure, and that's training that we get, and we get to hand it over?
Well, that's not the social part, that's the educational arm.
Well, we can, but, but we can make it so.
Yeah.
Doesn't sound like, but it's our professional book, like, yeah.
Yeah, two professional developments that are, and we can invite other local vendors.
Wait, where are they gonna be located? At the line area? Wait, where are they gonna be located? At the winery or?
Oh, my god, Maya, I'll talk to you.
It's up to you. It's up to you.
Maya, I would show up and be there for you.
Thank you.
Should be the bar attendant.
Alright. So we want two professional developments.
Professional development topics, okay.
Can you write that there?
And they.
Yes.
Sounds like Maya's the chair. My goodness.
Okay. Alright.
It has to be chairs.
I'm ready for her.
No, I'm not.
Oh.
So are those professional developments?
Hey, oh, your vice chair.
Your vice chair.
Work or is that? The chair or the vice?
No. So, so there, there, two professional developments will be for the whole board.
Right. And then is the, are board members supposed to also commit to trying to find some professional development thing to do on their own during year? One thing, two things, zero things?
Yes.
We, yeah, I'm, I'm, I think, I think that's reasonable. I mean, I really do. I mean, I know there's like, again, I really, since I.
But it, it could even be a book. Like maybe, like you could bring Irresistible and give it, you know, tell us to each get a copy and we'll have a discussion. That could be a professional development.
Sure.
So it's a book base.
The tree development is huge. Yeah.
And if you look at, if you look at some of our issues that we're having with discipline, how, I mean, some of these things, honestly, when you see the repeat, you're like, oh, was that a TikTok video? Or something? Snapchat was listed multiple.
Right.
Well, and like I said, I wrote her a pro book, so I can.
Oh, my god.
Yeah, yeah.
Exactly. Right. So two independent professional developments of two professional developments.
Okay.
And those professional developments can be, like I said, a book or anywhere.
Yeah.
It's like, turn off the data when their kids get.
Can I add something else that I don't, just might loosely tie in?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, all of our teachers are required to be CPR certified, I don't remember which, and you should be too.
Those. Well, yeah.
I think, you know, it would be nice, like, I don't know how.
You know what? We can do that as a development because, um, some of our bus drivers are actually leads and trained. Cause like I know my kid's bus driver, I needed it done for something.
Do we have to think about it in their schools?
It was one of the groups.
Yeah.
And they'll do it.
Well, I just want, like, if, I, I don't know if we outsource that for our teachers, like, do they do it over the summer? Like, how do we make sure our teachers,
Yeah.
if we're hosting CPR certification or first aid certification, like, tell me what the dates are, I'll go with that.
We do that ourselves.
Yeah, we do it ourselves.
We have trainers.
So if you just give us the dates, then we can come. And I think we should, I mean, if everybody else in our buildings is required to do so, we'd by example, right?
So we can come to.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's true.
It depends on what day of the week it is and what.
Well, I think if there's flexibility in the calendar, if there's multiple weather offered, then we can maybe pick a choose.
Yeah. Yeah, maybe we, we can just get a calendar if we're doing it.
If you can hold it at thirty-one different schools that we can hit all of the, I'm sorry.
So frequent.
Yeah.
Yes.
It is.
All year round.
Yeah, it is.
Such a little place.
Year round.
Cause I think.
But it's not something I really thought about. And I was like, yeah, we should probably do that. I think that would be good for us.
That'd be a good professional development too.
I have.
It's what I was not. Opportunity for us to be with CPR certified. Other people who are getting certified for the same reason.
That's true.
Alright, does anybody have anything else to add?
I don't think so.
Alright, and we are done with five minutes to spare.
Nice working with you ladies.
Bye, Susan's mom.
So, so are you typing up all the notes?
I got it, I got it, I got it.